This conference will now be recorded.
If everyone will please mute themselves until they're ready to speak, that will ensure good quality. And use the mute/unmute button or star six if you're on the phone. Okay, so the meeting is started. Ginny, do you want to read the?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Brooksbury Library Board of Trustees is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Members of the public who would like to join the meeting live may do so by using the link or the phone number provided in the agenda. The meeting will also be shown on Channel 18 and on Channel 18's YouTube channel. All set?
Okay. Well, call to order. I'm Joanne Brown. I'll be running the meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Linda Sebula. I see Linda Sebula is there.
Yeah.
Bill Crowell.
Thanks.
Hi, Brian.
Hello, everyone. My apologies for the technical difficulties starting off.
I see Bill's here. Joan McCarty.
She's there.
Kathleen Remillard.
Yeah.
Bernadette Waisack.
Yeah.
And Wheeler.
Here.
Also attending is Library Director Ginny Hewitt.
Here.
Assistant Director Emily Mylan and Administrative Assistant Megan Green.
Here.
Is our liaison from the Board of Selectmen here? No, I don't see him. And tonight, we also have Barbara Howard from Rockland Trust and Brian Capow from Rockland Trust. Okay, so the first thing we're going to do is go to the report from the Rockland Trust people.
Okay, this is Barbara, and I will start. Does everyone have the package that we sent out to you all?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to refer to you to page two. I'm just going to quickly review the agenda. I'm going to do an administrative review, then we'll look at the allocation, the mass legalist characteristics, which is what the funds are invested in, the performance, portfolio holdings, and then Brian will also do a market commentary.
Okay.
Can I just ask how much time you've allotted to us?
We haven't allotted a specific amount of time, but...
Okay, so if we keep it to like 15, 20 minutes, will that be good?
Yes.
I wanted to take everyone to fall asleep with someone rambling on.
Well, yeah, we'll just turn our microphones off.
Wait, April 4th, not off, and I'll probably figure it out.
All right, so the next section there is just the account information. So the account was opened in October of 2015. The investment objective is balanced, and again, Brian will review that with the allocation. And then the signers are Amy and Nancy from the town. So that is it for my section of the report, so I'm going to turn it over to Brian, and Brian, remember, you have 15 minutes.
All right. So what I'll try to do is, while diving into everything, which I'm always happy to do, but certainly takes more than 15 minutes, I'll try to hit some high points. And then what I'd like to do is get what's most important to you as far as questions, comments, what concerns you about the markets, rather than... So really, even before I go into the market commentary, I'd like to hear what maybe concerns the group. So real quick, on page three, the portfolio is what we would call a balanced portfolio. So kind of that, and right now, it's at 60/40 split. Tends to be more 55/45 is how we run it. And now it's 60 because we took advantage of the lows of the market in March. So to take you back real quick, I mean, I said we're not on the market yet, but when we look at the allocation, we usually keep it at that 55/45. March happened, and rather than circle our wagons, what we did real quick is we looked at all the investments in the portfolio, made sure that we took all hands on deck, everyone in the investment management team, made sure all the portfolios we hold, that the assets that we hold, there would be ongoing entities on the other end. So making sure essentially what we called investment triage. Making sure that everything was going to be a going-on concern and a strong company or a strong holding in the case of debt. Then we looked for any opportunities we could make within the portfolio. Could we trade out stronger things for weaker items? And also, what we could take care of any dislocation that we could see in the marketplace, meaning when things trade out of order, not on fundamentals, but more on market technicals. And so we reviewed the portfolio in that regard as well. And then what we ended up doing, since lastly, or not the same time really, but is rebalance the portfolio. When the stock market goes down 30% in such a short timeframe, we want to make sure we go back to what we want that allocation to be, too thick and thin or through time. So we made sure we had enough equity. Certainly, if it went from down 30, down 50, people would be like, "Oh, what are you doing that for?" But we wanted to make sure, again, we hold, that the town holds us to a investment policy that we want to make sure we can continue and that we're in compliance with. So that's what we did. The market coming back, then we're able to take essentially advantage of that and make sure that the portfolio grows as opposed to, you know, people have that 50/50 split and hard in the hands of the picture, but if something goes down and comes back up, you get to the same spot. If it comes down, then you sell a little list to make them back even, and then this jumps up. Now the portfolio is in a better position than if you just stayed still. So we don't like to sit in our laurels, and we don't like to just circle the wagons when things are really good or really bad. We want to make sure we know what's going on and we're treating the portfolio as such. So balanced portfolio, we kept it balanced throughout this. We didn't go to cash, and we didn't go to all stock. So I just want to refresh real quick on page four, because people would be looking at this portfolio and at times say, "Well, it's doing a lot better than the S&amp;P," or "It's doing more poorly than the S&amp;P." I will say, bond market and stock market, it's different than either. The town, when its trust fund at this point is allowed to invest in the Massachusetts Legalist of Investments, it's a list that they created essentially for the division of banks several decades ago to keep them, you know, and we can go back to a while when the banks were buying like Outwork, et cetera, and getting a little fancy tree with their investments or getting outside the ropes. Should we, you know, call it whatever you want to call it, the ropes outside the ropes, but certainly, they went outside of what their strengths were. So they tried to reel them back in, and the Department of Revenue said, "Well, the banks have a list. Why don't we put municipalities on a similar list or on their list rather than creating our own?" So they did so. So what's on this list? They can buy U.S. Treasuries and government securities. They can buy municipals, but most of the times, insurance not taxable. Municipals don't make as much sense. There are times when they can, but certainly, they can buy governments, they can buy municipalities. They can buy what they call super nationals, essentially international banking development, et cetera, that help countries that are debt-laden or certainly emerging markets more as a government support if you will. And they can find the list of corporate funds, essentially probably about 50 names. Most of them, if we, when we look at the list, are utility companies that have been rolled up or the other side, the bank, the, all the baby bells as they continue to get rolled up. You know, when they broke AT&amp;T, they had a whole bunch of different telecoms. But the list in general on the corporate side is, essentially railroads, telecoms, and utilities for the most part. And so as those names have continued to roll up, there's fewer and fewer. They're strong names for the most part. They tend to be more in the triple B rating, which sometimes makes people uneasy, but they're triple E, triple B sectors as opposed to just companies that are more risky. But there are certainly within the telecom space, but to be very careful if those AT&amp;T or Verizon wire lines are going to get sold off to essentially a jump-on company or health. So we do a lot of research with the corporates on this list to make sure it's not just... We don't just treat it like, "Oh, it's a legalist, just throw the money at it," because it's not that at all. You want to do your research throughout. On the equity side, if you think about kind of going against the S&amp;P 500, the legalist now has 22 names it can invest in, but certainly not the same breadth of market. Of that, the defensive nature of the market, of the portfolio, of this list ended up being almost about 70% of the portfolio is in more defensive names. That helps when things go bump in the night, like in March, because essentially about 35 or 32% of the portfolio, about almost 35 now, are consumer staples, or seven out of the 22 names. Those are essentially Coca-Cola, Procter &amp; Gamble, things that we use to thick and thin, but, you know, not necessarily the same like glossy growth company. On the healthcare side, same thing, six names are almost 27% of the portfolio of the list as well. And so that's, when you're doing high-flying tech companies, it doesn't really help you, but certainly, when things go, well, I guess I said, you know, for lack of a bit of term, a bump in the night, people tend to still take the prescriptions and Advil and all those type of things. So healthcare does pretty well through that timeframe. The issue, where you have issues, is the whole technology sector, which is, you know, depend on how you cut it, over 30% right now of the S&amp;P 500. We only have HP on the list, not exactly cutting-edge technology, and that's the only option we have. And then on discretionary, consumer discretionary, where you can, that's where a lot of your Amazons reside, et cetera, et cetera, at certain points, is only McDonald's, not exactly the most... It's almost like a staple rally, but it's considered consumer discretionary for the list. There's no energy, which certainly helps through this time period or 2020. There's no telecom, they're either debt, not the stock, no materials, and no... So it's a limited list, so when I see the returns, if I was to show you in March, you'd be clicking the heels, saying, "Wow, Brian, you did such a great job versus the market." And I show you when you start comparing it versus Apple and Microsoft, and it's not nearly the same return. So overall, how is the trust fund done? Switching to page five. And you can see that over the last three months, it's achieved a return of 4.29. You can see where that came from as well. The bond returns have been very low over the last several months. Interest rates already went down. In that low interest rate environment, just can't create a lot of new force. And you can see that stocks, you know, still continue to flourish, if you will, the last several months. Legalists held up pretty well versus the S&amp;P over that timeframe. The 8.93, the S&amp;P 500, and 6.78 for the more limited list. When you look at year-to-date, the legalist held up very well. When, again, when we're looking through March and really the throes of it, in the middle of March, it was a very good place to be in the legalist. It's come back so strong. And the way to think of how the way the S&amp;P 500 came back, the top five companies, five companies in the S&amp;P have been up over 25%. And the rest of the S&amp;P has been, has essentially been in negative territory. So it's really been heavy, the largest companies in the S&amp;P doing the best. So you can see the differential, how the S&amp;P through September, is 5.5% or over that, and then slightly negative for the legalist side, because Toothpaste and Coca-Cola and Fergus just aren't going to keep up with Apple and Amazon and Netflix, et cetera, and Microsoft running as fast and as hard as they have. Through time, you can see, though, the portfolio has done well. It's 7.21 since our inception and just over 6.9, it's 6.59 over the three years. The bonds have performed quite well, and again, the stocks have done well for what is on the list. It proved, you know, if I looked at the last decade, it would be much closer than the S&amp;P. The last five years, the S&amp;P really ruled the roost, and it's been such a tech story of those largest names. That's why you see that such a disparity or differential between the S&amp;P 500 and common. But overall, it ends up being a lower volatility or risk portfolio than the marketplace, because it doesn't have those securities that have, or the sectors really, that have the largest non-volatility or movement throughout this. You know, throughout the markets in general, really overweight consumer staples, healthcare, and some utilities that essentially stay a lot more steady when things usually go awry. So that's the performance. Before I go into kind of market or other items, questions, comments from the group? Okay, sure. Sure, Linda?
When you get to the page, that is, page 12, I guess, is there any possibility that we can get these on an annual basis, meaning 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019? One month doesn't tell me anything. So the schedule kind of lays out where money is coming and going. So it'd be, is there a possibility of getting that so we could at least understand the history, or I could understand the history and understand what we're earning versus what we're being charged? So is that a possibility?
So this is Barbara. So what you would like is to see an annual report for all those years so that you show, it shows the total of all the additions, fees, and everything each year? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so one that goes from whenever inception was to 12/31/15, and then calendar 2016, calendar 2017, et cetera.
So...
Yep, that'll... I can certainly do that. That will take me some time, but I can certainly do that.
Yeah, and before I do a, because this is manual, like this is a spreadsheet she calculates for the library trust funds each time. Is it more of a return base? You're trying to see what the annual return is each year in that net of fees?
I would just like to see the information.
Okay. Yeah, I know I just...
So do you, does Rockland, rather than do it in this way, does Rockland's portfolio, is there a sheet on your standard portfolio reports that has the year-to-date information on it structured out?
The actual statements do, but it doesn't break it out by the funds, because everything's co-mingled.
That's fine, but as long as it's, as long as it's our money, if it's the, I don't need it done by fund, but if you have that, that will at least help me understand what the trends, what is happening in terms of overall.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I can, and who should I send this to when I'm done? Should I send it to Megan?
Ginny, is that acceptable? I see nods, so I guess it's okay.
Well, I can send, I think I've gotten an email address from both Megan and Ginny, so I'll send it to both.
And then we can, we'll forward it to everybody.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that probably won't get out until sometime next, so that, so I can, I don't overpromise.
That's fine. I wanted to ask, did you just say that you couldn't separate it out because the funds from the town were co-mingled?
If I, if I did it, if I did it on our statement, the statement for the full portfolio, everything is together.
So that, so that means it's the, just to be clear, the whole portfolio is going to have all the town funds, not ours?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna break...
Not just ours.
I'm gonna break it down so it just shows the library funds. It may not show your individual funds, but it'll be just the library fund.
Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thanks for asking that, Joanne, because that's what I was expecting, but that was a good question.
Yep, no, it absolutely was. It'll be just the library fund.
Yeah, I'm sorry I was off on that. I just didn't know if, because if it was just a full annual performance number, you know, what did the, what did the fund achieve, and then back up, you know, the fee percentage-wise? That's an easier report that my group can do. It'll just, as I was, we can get the other one, it's just going to take a little while to amass all the years.
I think, Linda, would you like to see that, so not just what the funds are bringing in or the fees that are going out, but also in relation to what we spent? You want to see all the little pieces, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they are, which are, you're going to see the contributions, withdrawals that are going out, too.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I can, I can certainly do that.
Any other questions, comments, or questions about the market, anything else they're seeing? Questions why I have this crazy beard for the second time in my life?
No.
I actually grew when they got kicked out of school, and I started growing when they went back. I dropped my daughter off at college and started growing one, and I don't know where I'm going to go with it, but...
Well, what else would you like to point out to us?
Sure. So I was trying to think if you go to the last, let me say this here, travel the mic just real quick. On page 10 and 11, just because when you take a snapshot of the economy, I won't go too deep in it, but rather rehash everything that's happened. On page 10, one thing, on the right hand, on the left-hand side, I pull this. When people say, you know, "Look where the economy is, look how many things are going on." How can the stock market be close to where we started the year? Or, you know, depending, today, sometimes being ahead or below, you know, September was a bad month, but overall, how can we be there? And I almost want to say, you know, someone, or was very happy to see what investors, the way they view the market this time. Meaning, so often, anytime we're looking at, we're in a down period or we're facing a recession, et cetera, you see the market drop, and sometimes drops fairly precipitously. And with that, they, you know, sometimes people forget or just say, "Well, you know, things don't look good." Well, we have to remember that stock prices are really just the present value of future earnings. So when we look, when we look at the stock market, it's really, all right, if we're not going to get earnings, the stock market should be lower. So it started doing that when they didn't know what was going to happen. The government stepped in, and they filled the, you know, kind of pockets of a lot of people that are out there and needed funds and needed to connect who was working, who wasn't, because the unemployment certainly went up so high. And then the Fed stepped in, and they essentially opened the markets. Anytime you hear the Fed saying, "We're buying, you know, treasures, we're buying governments, buying high-yield ETFs, et cetera," they're essentially saying, "That market is open for business and companies that need to access capital can't." So they went through and said, "All the markets are open. You can raise money." And companies did. I mean, even companies, you think of like the Marriotts and Hiltons of the world, whose businesses were 90% close from a revenue point of view, could come to market. They tried to raise a billion dollars. They were able to raise it more than they wanted at a lower coupon, a lower yield than they expected. And there was, they were essentially 10 times oversubscribed. I mean, there were 10 buyers for every one bond that was out there. And that's at a time when their revenue was only 10% of what they had. And that kind of positive, you know, with the Fed saying, "Hey, we're here, and we're going to be here until we fix, until this gets fixed." So when you fast-forward to how the market came back, you see the blue lines on that left side, the last three. You can see 2008. We're going to have lower earnings this year. We weren't to work all year through the year, so it's going to be lower. But the next two years, if we come online and business happens, then there's no reason why, it's saying, the market now is saying, "There's no reason why the market can't be this high" if the expectations we have for corporations end up happening on those two blue lines. So those are what we watch as investors, as analysts. If earnings are starting to deteriorate at all, well, then that's when the market can slip. If what we expect to happen happens, then we'll be all right. And I just wanted to show the next page on slide 11. It's, you know, there's a lot of little cuts in color, but I'll go through it kind of counterclockwise and fairly quick. Now, if you were either getting, and I was doing some remodeling from this, so if you're either in the trades or have been doing items like that, when we talk to some clients, they're like, "Wow, the economy's booming because I can't get workers, I can't get supplies, there's huge inflation on wood, et cetera." So those people will say, "All right, I get it." But for so many of the rest of us who say, "We don't see anyone boarding planes. We don't see them boarding trains, we don't see the same traffic going on. We don't see people in restaurants the same, and we see a lot of these people laid off." How could this economy even be moving forward similarly to even how you're projecting on the page forward? And the way of the process here, because it doesn't make me feel good, it's not just the numbers versus the humanity side of it, because you would want everyone working, you want everyone to be in good stead. However, when you look at, there's this top-left section that essentially looks at those sectors, hotel, tourism, transportation, essentially restaurants, and then grocery, essentially food other than groceries, et cetera. So when you take that pie, that's essentially 19% of the GDP, or the gross defensive product of the US. So people say, "Well, if you're taking 20% off, the market should be down a lot more." So you go to the next part and see how many people are working in these industries. When you take those same sectors, it's about 20%. Those 20% of jobs, so we lost so many jobs out there, so many, and many of them were from these sectors. Now, where, what happens with people, and what happens with the economy separate, is those sectors together only equal about 7% of the operating company or essentially what goes to earnings for the S&amp;P 500. Essentially, the higher-margin businesses and the ones that keep the rest of the economy going, the industrial and the technology, et cetera, those items are still doing fine. And so therefore, they're essentially, that's why you can have strong earnings or somewhat stronger earnings than you would ever think that if you just walked the main street in any of our towns. But it doesn't, doesn't make me any happier that more of those people are out of work, but on the margin basis of the baseline economy or the backbone of the economy, it can still do well, though we struggle to keep some of these other ones afloat. So we'll still see potentially more money from the government still to come. The next cares or whatever they want to name the next package will. But those that have to take care of the people that we see in the front here that aren't working, but the backbone of the economy is still moving forward, and that's kind of what we see. And then it's a scary disconnect between the economy and then what we're seeing, but it is one that exists. I don't know if that helps answer anything that you're seeing out there or cause more questions, but certainly, if any, all questions concerned or anything portfolio or otherwise.
I'd like to poll the trustees, to see if there are any questions out there. I'd like to ask Linda first, because she's in alphabetical order, but she's obviously paying attention and is knowledgeable in this area. So Linda?
Until I have some information, Joanne, it's hard for me to have a question.
Okay.
So a lot of this has been overview, which has been very interesting.
Yes.
But I'm, you know, you know, I'm a bean counter, so I really look for information. So maybe I'll have some questions after I see some information, but thank you.
Okay, well, then we'll talk about this next month, too. Well, Bill, do you have anything you want to point, ask right now?
I don't have any questions. I wanted to thank Brian and Barbara for making the presentation and catching us up. There was a pause there during the surge of the pandemic when we weren't getting reports, but they've caught us up, and I appreciate the work that they're doing. And I appreciate Linda's expertise in the financial world that I don't have. I, whenever we have a discussion like this, then I realize, as a lawyer, I have to speak every day, because otherwise, it just is a foreign language. So I'm glad that Linda has a handle on some of this. My overall perception is that you seem to be doing okay and you're staying within our parameters. And success, I think, is just, in this world right now, is just staying even as much as possible. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Joan, do you have a comment?
I do not. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Kathleen?
I don't have any questions, and...
I don't have any questions and I thank you too for the information.
Bernadette, do you have anything to add? Okay. Jeannie, do you?
No, I just want to thank Brian and Barbara again, and I agree with Linda that we might have more questions once we have more information. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds great. Right, thank you Barbara and Brian.
You are very welcome. Thank you all. We are sorry that, you know, it's great to see everyone. It's seen faces because we just don't see that many these days. It's great to see everyone's face and I am so sorry we're not doing it, you know, in the library that we did last time. I wanted to see everybody and get to chat with you guys because it, you know, we see it from the other side, but it's always so good to sit with everyone, the caretakers of the library and how, or should say the stewards of the money. And how you've been good stewards in continuing. So we like to interact with how you're thinking, what you're trying to do with the funds. And then also I like walking out of there and having a nice hug meal in Harwich on a fall evening. So I'm sorry for all those reasons I don't get to. So, but thank you for having us. Any questions, please follow up and I'm happy to answer them when we're in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Everyone have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting's minutes from the September meeting. They were included in your packet. Does anyone wish to make any corrections?
I have one question. And that is, were you the, at the end it says you were acting chair. Were you acting chair for this meeting? Joanne?
Yes, I was.
Or were you real chair?
I'm the real chair in last meeting, yes.
You were the real chair?
Yes.
Okay. Emily. So that's on the last page. Where it has the adjournment for, on the meeting where it has the adjournment. It shows the acting chair adjourned the meeting, but she wasn't, yes, Jeannie.
Just wanted to say, so Joan, you could just make the motion to approve the minutes striking that word acting.
Okay.
And we don't have to bring it back next time?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting, accept the minutes with the deletion of the word acting in front of chair under item number 10 adjournment.
Okay, second? Second? Okay, all those in favor? Linda?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi, and I apologize for my absence at the beginning of the meeting. All of a sudden my screen went all blue. It said your device is having an error and it started making a loud buzzing sound. So it took me a while to recover, figure it out and go back.
These are trying times.
I think.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I'm in favor.
I take the motion.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Bernadette?
Aye.
And Jeannie made the, Jeannie?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Okay. Moving down to next item, public comment. Do we have anyone who has joined us online or called in that would like to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to take that as a note. Then we're moving on to reports. I don't have a report this evening, but Jeannie's report was included in the packet. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it? No? Okay. Jeannie, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure. Couple of things. So now we've had, since I wrote the report, we've added, we've been open a few more days. We started the grab and go inside access on September 29th. We're open Tuesdays 10 to 2 and Thursdays 3 to 7. So we've had three days. It's been fairly consistent. We've had 85 to 100 people each day. Usually there's an initial rush of people lined up to come in, but other than that, it's fairly steady. There's not been any congestion occurring. The last hour on Thursday evening is much less foot traffic, but that's normal for evening hours. About half of the people stay five to 10 minutes and the other half stay about 10 to 20. And a very small minority of people stay the 30 minutes. Those tend to be the computer users. So most of the time we have 10 to 12 people in the building. I think we may have had a high of 18 at one time, which is well below our limit of 30 people at one time. So the turnover has been occurring naturally. People pick up some items and they leave. We've had a greeter explaining the mask requirements, what's available and where things are and the expectations on the 30-minute time limit, and that's worked out really well. Everyone's, almost everyone's arrived wearing a mask. We have given a few out to those who didn't have it, but you know, they took it and they didn't object to wearing one. We've had to give a few reminders to people to have the mask cover their nose and mouth. But so far people have been cooperative and everyone was so happy talking about how, just how happy they were to come back in. Many people are coming in to just pick up holds, which they could have done at curbside, but they really enjoy the chance to come in. They missed the library and it just makes life seem more normal again to come inside. One area of potential concern we have is the computer use. Interest has been really high and many, well, we've probably had four to eight people each day. They have 30-minute sessions and a number of them have complained that they would like longer than 30 minutes. But we don't plan to extend those sessions. And the reason is many of the people that are coming in now to use the computers aren't able to do so independently. And so their computer skills are not good and they're expecting, and a couple have been somewhat demanding, wanting extended one-on-one help like we used to be able to provide. But that is not possible to provide that individual help to someone using a computer without having extended close contact. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So we've now marked out a six-foot space around the public computer. So at least it's a visual cue for patrons when a staff member can stand there and say, I'm not allowed to come closer to that than this and, you know, I'm sorry that I'm not going to be able to provide more assistance to you. So I know Emily will add some more in a minute, but over the past month, a lot of our time has been spent preparing for opening for inside access. We moved furniture and collections and the DPW finished their project to retrofit the building just in time. The three alcoves were enclosed and the plexiglass was installed. The new alcoves really looked fantastic. And they took a lot of great care to make sure that all the details were right and the doors and windows and walls look like they've always been there. So lots of thanks to them. I personally spent a great deal of time this past month packing up 20 years' worth of accumulated documents and files and moving things. I probably weeded half of the files that I had time to review, but I probably only got a chance to look at a third of what I have. So more to come. I'm in my new space and it's great and Emily's in her new space. And so all of the library staff members spent a whole lot of time cleaning, organizing and decluttering all the public spaces. We moved tables and chairs out of the public area. We moved some other bookcases so that we can have, could set up browsing collections for audiobooks and nonfiction DVDs and children's picture books in the main area of the first floor. And everything just looks nice and clean and well organized. It looks just like you would want it to, you know, like the experts say you should do. So people feel comfortable coming in during a pandemic. It looks like a well-cared-for, organized place, nice and clean. We have a new custodian. The custodian, custodial pool assignments were shifted and so we've had a new custodian for, I don't, maybe the last two months. Anyway, she's been a great help and she's around when we're open, when we're open to make sure that people are aware of the limitations of what they should, you know, needing to wear a mask and all. And let's see. I have some, I provided some statistical data in the packet from the two state reports that were due this past month. I don't know if you have any questions about that. It's kind of interesting to look. One is a historical look since the renovation in 98, which is kind of nice to see. But the other, I think it may be five or six pages. It shows the past few years. So it's more of a breakdown. You can see like audiobooks, print materials, what's happening and that's kind of interesting to look at as well. So just, I just wanted to mention the budget. The budget passed with no further cuts than what, after I recommended the August 5 cuts, no other reductions were made. So our final budget represented a 1% increase over fiscal 20, which is great. However, one challenge going forward is because the increase was so low, it'll, we will need, we can't sustain that for several years and meet the municipal appropriation requirement, which is the, to meet that, an appropriation for the libraries needs to be the average of the last three years appropriation plus two and a half percent. So it doesn't need to go up two and a half percent every year, but when you have a low year, you know, it's more important the next year. So for next year to meet the MAR, our budget would need to increase 2.3%. And the concern is we haven't received any budget guidance yet from the town administrator or the selectman. But obviously they're expecting it to be less than that. I'm assuming that that 2.3% will be over what they would like to see. So the traditional $20,000 in a petition article for Howardport and Chase libraries can count towards the municipal appropriation requirement. But the problem is there's no guarantee that town meeting will approve it. Or if they do approve it, I mean, or they may reduce the amount. So that's just something we're going to have to make sure that everyone's aware of so they know the impact of those decisions.
That's my. All right, thank you, Jeannie. And before we go on to Emily, I want to thank Megan for being here with us for that report. But if you want to just turn off your camera and go away.
I was going to say that I have some, a child who needs some homework assistance, so it's probably a good idea. But thank you. Good to actually see you all.
Thanks for coming. We rely.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Joanne, before you go ahead, just on the grab and go business.
Yes.
Just a comment that at Pilgrim Church, we had a yard sale maybe a month ago. And the biggest seller, he said, books flew out because nobody can get into their libraries. So everybody was buying books. So we're going to have another yard sale this coming weekend and got a ton of books. So you're in, we're in competition now, so we're going to get the doors open, get people into the libraries.
Not totally in competition, Bill, because we're not taking any donations and that's, so it'll be good to know that there's a church that is taking book donations.
Well, we're selling them.
No, but you need to get them from, to sell, right?
Yes, yes.
There are a lot of.
Do you want to give your address, Bill, so people can drop off at your house?
I just vented six bags of my mother's books on Sunday. So no, I don't need any more books. Take them to the Pilgrim Church in Howardport.
Then Emily. Emily also had a report. Does anyone have questions for Emily or comments? Okay, Emily, do you have anything you want to add?
No, Jeannie's right. We spent the majority of the past month getting ready for grab and go. There was a lot of work that had to be done, daily walkthroughs through the building just to, what have we forgotten? Maybe signage that needed to be updated, that sort of thing. So that was pretty time consuming over the last month. There's not a lot else in my report other than the podcast, the back-to-school podcast and a few other things that we managed to fit in. I think Jeannie's right. I think we're now three days in to grab and go and we're still kind of getting our feet underneath us and seeing what this workflow is going to look like for circulation staff. We've had a full-time staff member stationed at the door as a greeter, as Jeannie mentioned, and then a staff member also functioning as like a floater on the floor to assist people. But everyone else is behind the plexiglass in the circulation area. And it's a very different workflow for circulation staff. We're accustomed to just jumping from one workstation to the other, going out into the stacks with a patron, joining them at that computer to assist them. And we're having to relearn how to do some of those things. So I think it's going to take some time for us to really develop a routine, I guess is how I would put it. But I think staff are on board and we're talking things through constantly and that's really helpful. You know, at the end of a grab and go session, we're just doing a quick debrief and saying what worked, what didn't, what could we improve next time? And so as we can, you know, continue to get experience with this and dial some of those things in, I think we'll really come together as a team and streamline the process a little bit. I do have to, a huge shout out to Robin, our new custodian, who was so helpful in moving furniture. And we've relocated some shelving units. If you haven't been in since we reopened for grab and go, I invite you to come in and take a look. I think the library looks fantastic right now, probably with the exception of my office, because I haven't been able to put any files away or do anything in there. So it's kind of become the dumping ground for all of the random things that we realized didn't have a home. So you can avoid my office, but the rest of the library looks fantastic and I invite you to come in and take a look. Patrons were really excited, as Jeannie mentioned, just to be back in the building. And the building itself means a lot to the community and they love coming in to see the artwork and the staff as well and to get books. But the building itself is really meaningful to the community. So it was nice to be able to welcome them back in. But a huge thanks to our custodian, Robin, who really helped us quite a bit. Jeannie mentioned one of the sticky spots at this point is going to be the public computers, but we'll work on that. I think she's right, having that six-foot spacing around the computer will make it a little bit easy to set and maintain boundaries with patrons who maybe want some more one-on-one assistance that we can't really provide right now. We'll see how that goes over the next few weeks. One interesting thing that I want to point out is in addition to the 85 to 100 people that have come in during each grab and go session, at least one library staff member from a neighboring library has come in to see how we're doing things. And I'll admit, and I admitted to them, I did the same thing. I visited several open libraries. I went to Ostraville, I went to South Yarmouth and just to see how they had set up the library and what they were doing. So it's been nice to have that professional interaction with other librarians who are maybe a few steps behind us in the process, but have come in to get some advice. Yeah. Yep, so that's it.
Okay. Then the next one is building and grounds.
I don't really have anything to say because Jeannie pretty much said everything other than it really does look amazing. And if you haven't been inside the library, go inside, look and see. Sean and the DPW did an amazing job with the retrofitting and enabling it so that it keeps the staff and the patrons as safe as possible.
I was in too, and I can't believe how welcoming they've made the plexiglass look with the leaf stickers and the writing on the plexiglass. It's delightful.
We have some talented staff members.
Can I just say one more thing? Yesterday, when I went in there, there was a woman coming out that had been there for grab and go. And she was commenting on how wonderful it was to be back in the library, that for a few minutes she actually felt normal again.
Isn't that wonderful?
I have not been inside yet, but I've been by recently and I commented to my wife that this building, the library, has never looked better than it does right now.
It looks wonderful.
And the renovations and so forth and the landscaping, it's never looked better. It's fabulous.
It's wonderful. Jeannie and I had talked last year about, and it was too late to get wreaths for each window on the, on main. window on the, on Main Street. But if, if that, I, I think that would be wonderful. We, we thought it would be that one year. But it turned out that all the lights weren't working at the same time. So it'll look beautiful. And maybe we'll even get a little bit of snow.
Don't get crazy. I, I just want to second what Bill said about the building never looking so nice. It's like when you're, when you're trying to sell your house and you get it all cleaned out and decluttered for an open house. And so we just need to keep it that way. Because the issue is, is space, you know? And, and right now it looks so nice and clean because we moved things off of the floor. They're stored in what would otherwise be a public space. So, so we have months to work on that before we have full access. But I don't know if you can see this, I want to show you my new office. Bill, can you see that? That is the 1858 map of Barstow County. And it was hanging in a, in a back room with tech services, you know, with file cabinets in front of it and book carts. And people stop in to see it. So now it's hanging on my wall and you can see it coming down through reference. So it looks very impressive. And I'm sure, you know, once we're back to normal and patrons are in on the second floor, they'll see it and, and that's fine. They can, they should stop in and see it. There's, I think only maybe 10 or 15, do you know Kathleen? Of the, of the maps around, it's very rare.
Well, and it goes with the carpet.
It was gold and I knew the walls were yellow. I knew it would go, but I didn't really realize till they brought it in here to put it. The shading on the map is teal, just like the carpet. I mean, it's perfect.
It was meant to be.
Meant to be.
Okay. I don't believe Steve is, Stephen Ford is here. So we won't be having a, a report from this level. Correspondence. If you saw in the, the, the letter in the packet, Kathleen had mentioned that the staff needed to know that we were very supportive of all and grateful for everything that they'd been doing. And there was, there were a couple of emails going back and forth. And Kathleen and I put together this letter. And then we had one for each of the staff members. It was promising to do something nice later when we can.
It was delightful. It was the nicest letter, letting people know that we really do appreciate all they're doing. I, I, I really liked it. Thank you. It was very much appreciated to, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you to Jenny, Jenny for singling me out to be the only trustee that got a blanket.
No, everybody got a blanket.
It wasn't just me?
Wasn't just you.
Well, thank you very much.
You were the only one that got a personal note from Bill.
I did get, I did get.
Because I couldn't get into your office. I was impressed. They were like, no, no, put it on, put it on the table.
Just leave it on the table. Nobody's been in that office for six months, except for the. I read, I read now the Cape Cod Times online through the clams on my computer in the morning and it's getting chillier. So I've been using a Brooks Library blanket to keep myself warm while I'm doing it.
The staff I know really appreciate, I, I mean, I always appreciate the trustees. One of the benefits of the pandemic is having these meetings recorded. And so many other staff members have watched the meetings and, you know, were very impressed and appreciative of all of your concern for the staff and their safety. And I think that even though, you know, Emily and I meet with them and we discuss, you know, different plans to get, you know, we develop our plans together. But I think it was reassuring to know that we weren't being pressured, that, you know, they had more confidence in what we were recommending and discussing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business. We don't have any old business that I know of. Yay. New business. The library director's recommendation to go find free. I believe everybody had a, a chance to read this report. And does anyone have anything they want to add to it? Okay, I can hear shaking heads.
Can I just say for the public, people that may be watching, the full report is on our website, it's on the town website. And so, you know, there's a four page summary of studies and the history and everything. So people don't think that, you know, you're just cavalierly going away with revenue. The truth is it is costing us more than, than we're collecting. And the town is no longer forecasting any revenue from library fines and making their budget sources of revenue projections.
Jenny, do you think that we need a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, then let's go, let's, can I have a motion to go find free?
I'd like to make a motion to go find free.
Second? Second? Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joan? Make a motion. Kathleen?
Yes.
Bernadette?
Yes.
Jeannie Wheeler seconded the motion and I vote yes also. So it's unanimous. Okay, second.
Also for the public, just to say, this doesn't, well, we are currently waiving fines and we will throughout the pandemic. This just makes this change permanent. But it takes some time for clams, we'll have to get in the queue for them to do the systems work that's needed for that. And, and also for the public, this does not replace, there will still be replacement fees for any lost or damaged materials. This is just for overdue items.
Will we still get notices saying that our books are due?
Yes.
That seems appropriate. Okay, and then.
Nice reminder, yeah.
The next order of business is the donation of the Milton Welk painting of the Exchange Building from the Cahoon family. Jenny, where will, do, do you have any idea where this might be able to go? Or is that a concern?
Not a concern. We have lots of blank, blank walls now that we've moved so many things and, you know, things got taken down while D P W was doing their work. I think Emily's probably got a good spot for it. But the, the family has previously donated to other Milton Welks, one of, I think one of Brooks Academy and one of the library. And so this would be the third. And I believe in the email to Jeannie, one of the daughters said that the Oscar Cahoon and their father had, had a Milton Welk commissioned and it might be this. They weren't sure if it was this one or not, but if it is this one, then there are no prints. So that probably makes it more valuable, I assume.
Hmm. Okay. Well, can I have a motion to accept the donation of the Milton Welk painting?
Before we do that, I didn't catch that last remark about, is it a, an original or a print?
Original. It's an original, but it, and it may be one that Mr. Cahoon had commissioned. So there were never any prints made of it. You know, so it's not only an original painting, there are no copies.
It's, it's, it's a picture of the Exchange Building, but it's from the Bates Hardware side, not the First Church side like they normally are.
I can't wait to see it. I'm so excited about it.
Okay. Then, can I have a motion to accept the donation of the Milton Welk painting of the Exchange Building from the Cahoon family? So Linda made the motion first.
No, I didn't make a motion. I was trying to ask a question.
Oh, all right. Jeannie made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Just a quick question. What's the date of this? And in terms of insurance, do you, what is the process? Do you then tell the town that there, you've got an additional painting to insure and it has X value so they can add it to the inventory?
I think the value on all the artwork is, I, I don't know how that's determined. The town has a schedule and they insure the art throughout the town and they would add that to it.
That's all, yeah.
I don't have the date on it, Linda. Do you, Jeannie?
No. And, and Anne hasn't come up yet to get it out of the condo, so. She should be coming, you know, sometime this month.
I was just curious, because I live in Milton Welk's house where he lived here for years. So I was just curious. Yeah?
Oh, how lucky.
My mother also lived in that house.
She did.
In the summers. And Eileen Cahoon is the library trustee that I replaced in 1980.
That's right.
1908?
1908. Thank you, Joanne, for that.
So this marks your 40th anniversary. Bill, this, this year is your 40th anniversary on the board?
I believe so.
Oh, my gosh. That's simple, man. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to take the roll call. Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Bernadette?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
And, and I also vote yes. Joanne, Veronica?
Unanimous.
Do we have any money, monetary donations this month? Oh. Well, okay, that's a disappointment. Then the next item is the 2022 to 28 Capital Plan submission. Oh, Jenny, can we discuss that again? This was the, it's the updating the library.
The interior reconfiguration, yes. We've had it on the capital plan since 2016. So we haven't received the instructions yet, you know, since town meeting just passed. But from what I've heard discussed, I, I, I suspect we may get, we may need to submit that in the next few weeks before the next board meeting. So that's why I'm bringing it up to you. The current plan has $40,000 for an assessment and plans in fiscal '22 and $150,000 in fiscal '24 to do the work. As you probably know, the town is looking at pushing back all of the projects and, you know, with all the financial impact of the pandemic and the lost revenue. The recent retrofitting work done by D P W, which was paid for from the CARES Act funds, went a long way to meeting our biggest priorities. I, I, I'm recommending that we remove this project, that you vote to remove this project from the capital plan. I think we need the time post pandemic to see how far this goes towards meeting our needs and to see how, I think no one really knows what post pandemic use of public facilities is going to be. And I think we need that time to see what the community needs are and also to see, you know, if this met most of our needs, you know, it, it's more, I just think we need the time to see. I, I don't think we can defend it. And I'm also thinking, if you don't vote to do this, it's, it's going to get pushed back anyway.
Okay, Linda?
I think that we should push it back, but I don't think we should ask to have it removed from the capital plan because then we'll start over again and it'll be 2030 before it's looked at. So if anything, I think this board should say, we'd like to move it in the Q to 20, whatever, 23. Not just completely remove it because then we're going to be completely out of luck.
I agree. We don't want to do anything with the roofing article though, do we?
No, that's a D P W article now. That's not under us. I, I would like to suggest then, like even fiscal '24, I think '23 is next year. At this time, we'd be making the recommendation and I, we will hopefully be back in normal operations, but maybe only for four months or six months, you know, not, not very long.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with to 2024. I think my only point was not to remove it from the capital plan, but have this board say, we'd like to move it in its, move it out a couple of years.
But I suggest that we move, if it's on the plan for '22, to make it '24. If it's on the plan for '23, because it was going to be a two-year project anyway.
It's on for '22 for the plan. So if we move that to '24 and move the, the project itself back to, from '24 to '26.
That's a 26 or 25?
We had two years. You know how slow it is to get the assessment and then, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with Linda. I was going to make the same point. Don't get off the list.
Right. But can I have a motion to?
Sure. Motion to approve requesting that the interior redesign projects be moved by two years on the capital plan.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'm, I'll do a roll call vote. Linda made the motion. Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Bernadette?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
And I, Joanne, vote yes also. So that's unanimous.
Thank you. I didn't want to make that decision myself. And I'm concerned there's a tighter timeframe this year. So it might be before you meet.
Oh, yes. That sounds pretty likely. Okay, trustee reports and requests for next meeting's agenda. I'm going to poll the trustees and see if you have any reports or comments, feedback, anything you want to say. Or add to the next agenda or receive a report on in the next meeting. Bernadette?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Bill? Do you have anything you want to bring up next meeting?
I do not.
Okay, Jeannie?
No.
Okay. Joan?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Okay, Linda?
Nope.
All right. Well, that's cutting the meeting really short here. The upcoming meetings and events. Our next meeting is November 4th at 7:00. And the, our report to the, okay. Our report to the, annual report to the selectmen of, is to be determined.
I haven't heard them even discuss having annual reports this year, so it may not be happening.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Joan wanted to second?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Roll call vote. Linda? Do you?
Yes.
Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Bernadette?
Yes.
And Jeannie Wheeler?
Yes.
I want to go home too. Meeting is adjourned at 8:10. Nice job. Okay. See you next time. Go see. Jenny's office.
Wind has been horrible. It sounds like the whole backyard is out from one side to the other. The wind has been howling my house.
Yes. Yes, it is.
I kept on thinking I was going to lose a power. Glad I didn't. Goodbye, all. Good to see you. Stay healthy.